Welcome everyone. Sorry we're a few minutes late. We're having a few problems without IT. But we've got it ready and up and running. Welcome. Do we have any apologies today?
I've not received any apologies Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Item three, have we got any exclusion of public and prayers?
No items Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any declarations of interest? No, thank you very much. Right, just before we start, I'm aware that this room is needed at 3.30. So if we could get out by 3 o'clock, it would be much appreciated by all the officers. We don't want people waiting outside. Okay, thank you very much. Item four, five, minutes of previous meeting. Can we approve those minutes? Members, thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any matters arising from the minutes? On page nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20? Are we all happy? I know matters arising. There was just one thing I would like to ask Deborah. Did we get some written answers to some of the questions that came along?
Thanks Chair. They are being delayed, but I have followed it up and I am speaking to Matthew about getting those responses finalised and sent out. But I've apologised to the members of the public that there's been a delay to getting those out.
Thank you Deborah. Do we have any public questions and petitions today?
No Chair.
Thank you. Right then, item seven, over to the Clean Air Plan. Who's going to present that? Tom? Welcome, Tom.
Thank you Chair. So yes, I'll start with some background, which some of you might be familiar. But Sheffield and Rotherham were directed in 2017 to take action on illegal levels of air pollution across both local authority areas. Air quality in Sheffield has actually exceeded legal levels since 2010. And the way in which we were directed to take action was to review proposals for a local clean air plan. In 2018, in December, a report came to Cabinet at the time to take forward a category C plus charging zone as part of our Clean Air Plan, focused around the city centre, including the Inner Ring Road and all roads within it. That decision followed submission of a outline business case to government, which we got confirmation of government's position in March 2020. At that point, it was considered appropriate due to the time that it had taken for government to confirm their position and some of the emerging issues through the summer, obviously, and spring in 2020, associated with the coronavirus pandemic, as to review the scheme. We've done that and I think it's fair to say that whilst during 2020, there were periods associated with the lockdown where air quality had improved significantly, our review did show that there was still a need to take forward a clean air zone in Sheffield and that in line with our direction, the scheme that would achieve compliance in the shortest possible time, was a class C clean air zone on the same geography as the original proposals. So the report to Cooperative Executive last week recommended that we should proceed with that category C charging zone, which would cover compliance standards for buses, coaches, HGVs, minibus, taxis and light goods vehicles, but not private cars. And that we should accept grant funding that had been awarded in March 2020, which was around £20 million, much of which would be spent supporting those affected to move to compliant vehicles. Associated with that, that we should commence a public consultation on the final scheme this month. Work is underway at the moment to finalise that. That we'd follow that on in the new year with a formal submission of a final business case to government, which set out our plans in detail. And that actually we moved towards delivery and implementation of the zone awarding contracts that might be required. More than happy to discuss any of the detail associated with the decision and the report that went to Cooperative Executive last week. So I hope you do.
Thank you Tom, do you want to add anything? Douglas?
I don't think there's anything that needs to be added really. Tom's outlined it very eloquently, so we're happy to take any questions between us I guess.
Thank you very much. councillor Jones?
Thank you Chair and thank you Tom for the presentation. In the original proposal, the previous one, the C+, there were areas of intervention outside the city centre, within Sheffield's confines itself. Where are the plans on those elements and those interventions? When will we be seeing the work around those bits?
Thank you councillor Jones. You're right, the charging clean air zone is one part of our overall Clean Air Plan. As I mentioned, we directed jointly with Rotherham to take action. So the actual Clean Air Plan area is the full local authority boundaries of Sheffield and Rotherham. The action that we need to take and the schemes that we need to deliver need to ensure that there is compliance across the full area. So whilst the clean air zone is focused around the city centre, the implications of improving buses, HGVs and some of those other fleets that move across the city and over into Rotherham's boundary, and improving the emissions from those vehicles and upgrading them, is a key part in achieving compliance across the full area. But there are some specific schemes that are required out with the charging zone. So obviously the financial support methods are part of that broader package. There are some other focused delivery elements within the city centre, so our scheme also requires action on a rundle gate, with bus gates there to manage the flow of traffic moving north along a rundle gate, to minimise emissions along that stretch of the city centre. We also need to take action on bus idling, particularly within the city centre, and that's again, a committed action that we're required to take forward. In Rotherham, there are three distinct locations where specific schemes, traffic management schemes mainly, those include things such as HGV restrictions, changes to their road network along the A633 to move some buses on to parallel routes and bus priority measures to support that. Those are all moving forward. In March this year, Rotherham took a decision at their Cabinet to move forward with those schemes. And we're obviously now in the position of committing that action to move forward with our elements as well. There are wider complementary measures though. So whilst those are within the Clean Air Plan, schemes such as those we're promoting through our Connecting Sheffield Programme, albeit funded from Transforming Cities, which is separate, to move people towards choices that might be more realistic and attractive from a public transport and a cycling and walking perspective, will all lead towards, you know, positive outcomes in terms of air quality. So it's important that whilst the Clean Air Zone has specific funding for that specific plan, the broader way in which, you know, we want to move towards having more sustainable clean transport network and offer for people in Sheffield is much broader. The key reason why we're not just focusing on making cycling, walking, public transport better to attract people to those modes, is mainly associated with the time and the scale of the challenge. So government had already set out at the start of the process, when they directed us to take action, that their national assessment was that charging clean air zones were the fastest way of making changes and making those improvements to air quality. Our assessment in 2018 confirmed that a charging clean air zone as part of our overall plan was actually the way to achieve that in Sheffield, as it has been found for many other places. So we're not the only city that has to take forward action in line with directions. You might be aware that Birmingham have gone live earlier this year with their charging clean air zone, which is a category D, which covers all vehicles that are non-compliant. Compliance effectively is measured by a national standard, which is Euro 6 diesel, Euro 4 petrol. And it's probably worth highlighting that one of the changes from our original category C+ proposals to our current proposals is that we think that through some of the changes in air quality and some of the improvements that have happened over time, that we no longer need to apply the plus measures, which was a higher standard for taxis and private hire vehicles, which would mean that they would need to move towards electric and ultra-low emission vehicles as soon as the zone was turned on. We think that we are now, from our assessment, we can reduce that standard down to the national standard, so it is a flat category C zone. And that would still achieve compliance in the shortest possible time. But it means that taxi drivers and private hire vehicles can move towards a Euro 6 diesel standard or a Euro 4 petrol standard as that minimum threshold of compliance. So yeah, there are more aspects than the charging zone solely for the Clean Air Plan and there's clearly a broader way in which will influence how people move around the city, so that it is more sustainable, more in line with our ambitions around dealing with the climate emergency and so on.
Thank you for that Tom. Certainly a ward with a large number of taxi drivers, I think the moving away from the plus restrictions to the diesel 6 and petrol 4 Euro standards are much better. I think it feels more equitable for a lot of those drivers who don't have the income to do that, so that's really welcome. In the report, section 1.14, 1 through to 234 I think it is, there's several elements in there in terms of the tailpipe emissions of nitrous oxide and the carbon dioxide emissions coming from cars, transport being 27% of the city's bits. The reason I kind of mention that is that we are aware that there will be displacement of vehicle journeys from out of the city centre because of the clean air bit. It's an artefact of that, people will avoid it because of charging. Some of those displacements will be into areas like Owl Lane and Rutland Road. And Owl Lane specifically is an area with already problematic air quality issues. There's monitoring stations on Barnsley Road and Owl Lane because we're aware that the air is not very good. But also in the report, you specifically mentioned that the impact's going to be on the young and the old. Burngrieve is a ward with one of the youngest demographics, we have a lot of children, it's a family centric ward. So what mitigations can we do to address some of those displacement activities? We will see an increase in traffic, so if we can do more to help people get out of schools on the school runs, specifically to get those children to be more actively engaged in walking, or making sure those roads become safer, so that they can be safe to walk the streets to school. Is there any measures specifically for Owl Lane and others that you think, through Transforming Cities or other measures that we can get?
Thank you. So yes, you're right. Any zonal measure, whether it's a parking zone or certainly, you know, a charging type mechanism, there will be displacement and that is something that we have looked at as part of our appraisal of the scheme. And also when we were looking at the options in the run-up to defining the category C+ zone earlier in the process. I think it's really important that as part of our scheme, it isn't just deliver a scheme, turn it on and there you go. There is a continuous monitoring regime that we need to set out to government as part of our final plans. And that's what we're developing at the moment. It's really important that we understand what the actual implications of the zone are and that we do respond to that. So we need to be alive to that and aware of that and that's certainly something that we are taking forward. In terms of, obviously if there are adverse implications, if there are issues that we need to take further action on, then as part of our category C proposals, we are aware that, again, as part of our forecasts at the moment, that there will be some surplus income that will come into the council. As part of that, we will need to set out broadly what that programme might fund. And there will be opportunities through that to look at those types of issues. So we do have a mode shift stars programme that you're aware of and we have our school streets programme. Those are predominantly funded from other DFT funds at the moment. Some of those have been reduced in recent years, particularly in terms of our mode shift programme. And there will be an opportunity for us to look at how we can take forward further activity, whether that is the working with schools, whether it is actual physical measures, which some of our school streets that we're developing now will be. But there will be that opportunity for us to clearly look at the monitoring we're undertaking, looking at the implications of that and responding. And that is something that we will, and we haven't got all of the details of that now, but you know, that's something that we will clearly be working on over the next few years.
Go on Doug. I just wonder if I can add a word to that because I know Owl Lane well and, you know, certainly agree that we need to do something. But the bigger picture of course, is that the point about the decision that we have now made, is that we should see a fully full clean up of the bus services in the city. And that's important because of course Owl Lane is in a dip. It means that a lot of buses pass through there next to North and General and on both sides of the hill, they're accelerating to push out lots of fumes as they get up there. That's partly why Owl Lane's so difficult. So cleaning up the buses will be good. It will have an impact on the taxi fleet overall, that's got to be good. And of course it won't affect private cars at all, so there'll be no displacement of private cars into that area. Very much hope that, you know, for the children and families that live around there and everywhere around that area where we desperately need to clean up the air pollution, that this will have, you know, a significant positive impact. Even though there is a lot more to do and as Tom says, you know, the schools have, you know, two important schools there have a big role to play in the message they can put out to the children and to their parents. And at some point we'll need to have a look at, you know, what more we can do through our leverage with the schools and the city to see, you know, how we can really make that impact. But yes, the Clean Air Plan will hopefully have a big impact on that area in Owl Lane and that's really important, so it's not just the city centre.
Thank you. Quickly.
Yeah, okay. On that one specifically, the schools, and well, I'm kind of minded to think about the Race and Equality Commission, that has shown that equality and equity or equitability are two different things. Those schools that you rightly mentioned have significant issues in terms of gaining inclusion for schoolchildren, in terms of the BAIN communities that they serve, that they are underrepresented and underserved. So because the schools are already stressed with trying to get those kids into schools, they will need extra assistance to make sure that they can do those transitions to encourage active travel. Now, I've been contacted, as we've all had emails as councillors, from Living Streets, Jane Rickwood. Now Jane said that they do monitor the schools to see who responds, to see who can engage in those activities. Is it planned that we will be reaching out to Living Streets to kind of share their experiences, share their databases, to see which schools are trying to take on those services? Because the schools that aren't may be the ones that need greater assistance to get over that equitability bit. Because without a teacher that's able to take on that leadership role, take on that gauntlet, the mode shift can't engage because until you get to the gold standard, mode shift can't engage because it's felt there's diminishing returns because of restrictions on our resources to deliver services. So if we can do some of those proactive engagements to monitor the situation, to see where in terms of equitability, resources do need to go, that would be really, really helpful going forward. And it will certainly reassure people that, yes, those without the monies that will be avoiding the city centre, that their children aren't the ones that are most impacted by that, that would be really helpful. Thank you, thank you for the indulgence Chair, I'll be quiet now, thank you.
Thank you Chair. The key routes into the city from the M1, between junctions 33 and 36, and Inner Ring Road was built as a relief road, particularly to allow traffic to flow round the city to get to the west side from the east, where all the, and the north, where all the major arterial routes from the M1 come. You mentioned in the report, in the purpose about wider and additional traffic management measures have been identified. Are these measures outside the inner relief road? And if so, could you be a bit more specific about where they are please?
Thank you. The wider measures that I mentioned earlier, the ones that are the wider traffic management measures. So there are no other specific traffic management changes that are proposed beyond the ones I mentioned earlier. In Sheffield specifically, it is the bus gate on a rundle gate, which is a proposed northbound bus gate. And there are some traffic management signal timing changes on the Inner Ring Road that are proposed, some of which have, you know, within our review of traffic management and network management have already been implemented and will be continually reviewing those as well. But there are no wider traffic management measures in Sheffield proposed as part of the Clean Air Plan. We do have a broader parking programme, which again, is looking at the moment at some priority areas. They are around Kellam and Neeps End. There is proposals for parking zone treatments in and around Park Hill area. And there's also a proposal around the St Vincent's area, all of which as part of that broader demand management, mode shift aim, is to address problems in those local communities from people commuting and parking where there is no restrictions, which causes local issues and local problems to residents and local businesses. But there's also obviously people commuting into the city and using that as a free parking space for much of the day. That again has been implicated, there've been impacts and implications on that as a result of the last 18 months, as I'm sure you can imagine. But it's still our intention that those are a priority around the city centre that we will be taking forward. But they do, again, it's that broader programme of activity within the city that we're taking forward, so there are those schemes as well.
Okay, thank you. It's noticeable that, first of all, the initial charges that are put in, if you look at other major cities, the charges go up. And one of the major issues we will have, I'm sure, is rat running to avoid charges. Particularly when they know that going on to the relief road, they will be charged for going round to another part of the city. Now, are we going to do any traffic mitigation studies on, for example, the outer ring road? Where traffic can easily come off the parkway and go round that way to avoid charges? From the north to get to Ecclesall Road and that side of the city, it's very straightforward to go through Hillsborough, Walklet and Crooks to get there. Similarly, roads like Crooks Mall Road can be used to go and avoid going on the inner relief road. So are you going to, within these plans, look at any traffic mitigation measures for these sorts of rat runs that could well be created as a result of charging on the inner relief road? Thank you.
Thank you. So yes, as part of our monitoring and evaluation, we won't just be looking at air quality levels across the city, but we will be looking at, based on the appraisal that we've undertaken, we will be looking at where we know now there may be those implications around redistribution of traffic. As part of that monitoring and evaluation, we'll be looking at that very closely. The issue for us will be kind of determining the actual impacts of the zone and the implications. Clearly, within Sheffield, we have a inner ring road, as you mentioned. We don't have, like many other cities, a full outer ring road. We have a partial one on the kind of eastern side of the city, but we don't have a full outer ring road. So people do inevitably have to travel into, towards the city centre and around the city to get to other places. And we're very conscious of that and obviously, we're not proposing that we're going to be building large outer ring roads, but the city does have a classified road network and certain roads are higher classification than others and therefore more of a distributor network than just a local road network. But again, we know that in a lot of those distributor roads, there are lots of other activities and lots of people that live close to them. So we will be looking at that carefully through monitoring and evaluation and if it does require us to take further action, once we've determined what the implications are, then that is something that we'll be looking at.
Thank you. Last question from me then. So if we are aware of this and we do need it, we know it needs to be looked at, are there any funding arrangements in place for that to carry out? Does it come out of the Clean Air Zone funding or is it from some other source?
So what we will need to do is, we will need to look at from the projected surplus income associated with the charging zone, we will need to set out, not a prescriptive programme for what that funding will be used on, but we will need to set out the types of activity that that funding might be used for. And there are requirements around that funding in terms of what it can be spent on. So it is in general, for additional transport measures to continue to improve the transport network and air quality in the city. And therefore, it is one of those places that we can look towards, should there be a need to take further action as a result of displaced traffic or any other measures, for us to look at as a route towards delivering measures to address some of that. But that would be obviously after we've done the monitoring, the evaluation and considered the implications arising out of the scheme and any implications of it.
Thank you. Councillor, wait, what's Aries for next?
Thank you Chair. A number of questions. First of all, I was a bit disappointed that the report was a little bit short on evidence. So my questions follow on from that and it's along a similar vein to previous questioners. So first one is, what modelling has been done? What modelling's been done on displacement of traffic and therefore pollutants and its impact on local roads? Particularly, I also have a concern about the flow from the M1 junctions to the western city. I mean, I noted that at the weekend, last weekend, there was a tailback on the parkway right back to the M1 because there'd been a bump and that was on a match day. So I'm wondering, you know, particularly problems on match days when big matches, you know, people come from, come to, into the city from Blackpool or wherever it is at the time. So also, I would have liked to have seen some evidence on the, you know, the PPN levels, you know, and I'm not quite sure where all the stations are that measure the pollutants. So I'm just wondering, what evidence is there currently to back up the decision that's been made? And also, what projections would there be if there was this displacement and the modelling showed that, you know, I'm trying to, you know, are we being preemptive in looking at the displacement areas? I mean, you know, Prince of Wales Road, you know, City Road, Duke Street, those kinds of areas, you mentioned Park Hill, but I'm wondering what, you know, whether you're actually shifting the pollutants into those areas as a result, and I need to see the evidence to show that that isn't the case. And the impact on existing 20 mile an hour zones, I'm not quite sure where all the 20 mile an hour zones are currently. The experience in Bath was that the Clean Air Zone there, according to 200 reports, was that it actually increased the speed of traffic in 20 mile an hour zones. Also, has any detailed assessment been carried out on the short term economic impact on the city centre? Then, the paragraph 1.6.2, it talks about Jacku have confirmed that further implementation fund monies can be accessed at the full business case stage. Have Jacku indicated how much funding? And my final question is around the taxi business, and I'm just wondering what the initial reaction so far has been from the taxi drivers, like the Taxi Driver Federation?
Thank you, thanks for those questions. I'll try and take them in order. If I miss anything, do let me know. In terms of the modelling and evidence, the process that we've been in for most of the last four years has been significant in terms of the analytical assessment of this issue. So it's just in terms of the modelling, what we're looking at, we're directed to take action on nitrogen dioxide emissions from road transport. So what we have is almost a three staged modelled process, the first of which is a citywide transport model, which effectively lets us know where people are travelling on an average day, and it gives that picture across the city in terms of those flows and across our network. That then informs another model, which takes the transport flows and turns those into nitrogen oxide emissions, so that's what comes out of tailpipes. So that's informed by information that we've got about the fleet that is driving around Sheffield. So we've used AMPR, automatic number plate recognition cameras in the past at various stages to capture that information, and to, we've then translated that using the DVLA into actually what all of those number plates are in terms of their actual emissions per vehicle. That's then told us what that total tailpipe emissions looks like across the city, and we've then translated that information into an air quality model. And that air quality model uses the transport emissions, but also the wider emissions, whether that's from industry or background emissions, to inform what the picture around air quality looks like in Sheffield. And we do that at different stages and different scenarios. So we have a baseline model, a baseline model from 2017, and we forecast forward into the future using, again, a whole series of assumptions, many of which are provided to us by DEFRA and Jacku, some of which are informed by local surveys and information. And we obviously have, across the city, quite a wide spectrum of locations that we already monitor air quality at. Those are all available, that information is all available publicly on our Clean Air website on the City Council. It shows the trend in terms of what air quality is over an average year, which is the measure of compliance. So you'll see in their small graphs, if you click on the little icons on our website, you'll be able to see all of that information, and anybody can access that, it's open access information. So we use that to effectively ensure that our baseline models are in line with what is actually happening in the real world, because obviously, models are exactly that, they are theoretical tools to inform decisions. And we've used that to, at every stage, to test and refine options. So the acid test for government is, does our mitigation at a point in time in the future achieve compliance with EU threshold levels, which are 40 micrograms per cubic metre of air for nitrogen dioxide? Does it achieve that across the city? So what we've done is, we've taken that as the acid test, and we've also looked at whether those different options previously can achieve that compliance in the shortest possible time. So there's a delivery aspect to that, not just a theoretical modelling approach. So at the moment, we know that there are still locations that are currently not compliant. We know that moving forward, there are still locations predominantly around the city centre that exceed that level. And the category C zone, which we're directed, legally mandated by government to deliver, will achieve compliance across all of those locations, and more broadly, all the locations within Sheffield. The issue for us is that that scheme that we're mandated to take, we can move that forward to delivery, and at the moment, it's anticipated that it will be probably late autumn in 2022 that we can implement that scheme to try, to aim to achieve compliance in 2022. Compliance is measured at that legal level, but across, effectively, the average calendar year. So that is the current position in terms of the, how modelling and underpinning evidence to the decision and the recommendation to cooperative executive last week has been assessed. In terms of redistributed traffic, you're right, and some of the other questions this afternoon have highlighted that redistributed traffic is a potential issue. We know from modelling that there are certain locations in the city where there's the potential for traffic to be redistributed. What we've found from places that have already gone live, such as Birmingham and Bath, is that actually, they have seen that vehicles are becoming compliant quicker than they had forecast. So when their schemes have gone live, the actual rate at which vehicles coming into zones are becoming cleaner is actually quicker than they forecast. Now, in terms of our zone, there are certain things that we will not know until we go live. Some of those are around actual redistribution of traffic, and some of those are around that rate of compliance and the change in the fleet in Sheffield. So all of those things will have to be monitored carefully. Once we understand the real position, there are, as I've mentioned already, certain things that we may need to do to take action. In terms of the economic impacts, what we've done through the period of review that we had, particularly in relation to Covid impacts, is we have had close discussions with a number of the fleets that are effectively covered by a category C charging zone. We did have discussions with taxis, and in particular with coaches, because we knew that those fleets in particular were very heavily impacted as a result of the different periods of lockdown and Covid. I think it's, you know, I have to say, I've not had a discussion with the taxi trades since the decision last week, but as part of our consultation, we will be having focused engagement with them, and we will be encouraging them to provide us with their views, but we'll be meeting with them to have some of those discussions. I think from the initial consultation, I think there was a concern around the costs of moving towards electric vehicles for the Hackney trade and ultra low emission vehicles quickly, and in part, some of the availability of those vehicles. And a move towards a Euro six diesel, Euro four petrol standard is probably, well, is far more available and affordable than a more limited fleet of vehicles, particularly for the Hackney trade in Sheffield. We will be offering financial support to the Hackney trade and to the private hire trade. We do want to take the opportunity to encourage as many people as possible to try and look at electric vehicles now, while there is the opportunity for us to provide financial support. So we will, if somebody wants to move from a non-compliant black cab now to a Euro six diesel vehicle, we're proposing that there will be financial grants available of up to £5,000. That's just to get to minimum compliance, and up to £10,000 is an operational grant for people that want to move to an electric vehicle. So we're trying to incentivise by the financial support we're available to provide. Just in terms of the full business case stage and additional funding, there is an opportunity for us to present to government as part of that full and detailed business case, that the developed cost of the scheme from the OBC stage, the outline business case that we've already had approval of, that is predominantly in relation to the infrastructure costs associated with the scheme. It is the kind of the signing, the AMPR, and all of those associated civils costs of the scheme. It is in relation, in relation to the revenue, financial support costs, but there is an opportunity for us to present the case, and if it costs more than we've previously indicated to government to deliver our scheme, then they will consider that at that point, and we're fairly confident from the discussions we've had with them that they will cover those costs, because they are required in order to implement the compliance measures which governs the charging infrastructure. So hopefully, that's covered your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Rotten?
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. First, a procedural one, if I may. Can I ask, I appreciate, obviously, that this decision has been rushed through, not subject to call in, on the grounds that it had to be decided last month, or there was a danger of losing funding. But, so I understand that, but I don't understand quite why it couldn't have been decided earlier and gone through the normal scrutiny process, because, you know, we're discussing it now, but we're discussing it after the decision's been made. So can, yeah, can I have an explanation as to why this decision couldn't come to Cabinet a little bit sooner and allow a time for the normal scrutiny process to operate? Thank you.
Well, I can answer it. I mean, I can't speak from before the time we're in the administration. Since I've been in this post, and it's been in my portfolio, I've been pushing this to come to Cabinet as soon as possible. We all know the Clean Air Zone is important, and also fully appreciate those practical difficulties. Yep, I would have liked to have seen it come further, come forward sooner, but there we are. It's now done.
Well, thank you councillor Johnson. I'll take that as a don't know, which is a little bit surprising, given that, you know, it is your portfolio, and you should know, you know, why, why things are possible or why they're not. But, okay, okay. So on the, on the point of substance, on the first point of substance anyway, I mean, I want to, I mean, I printed off, I think possibly Tom referred to these numbers on the council website of the data from the diffusion tubes around the city. And I've got to say, the bits that leapt out at me was first the Midland Station, I guess that's due to trains rather than motor vehicles and the roads, and Halm University. But the other one that leapt out was Burngrieve, as councillor Jones mentioned, and they all strike me as roads that we are displacing traffic on to. And the obvious question is, well, why on earth are we doing that? Why are we including the inner relief road, the inner ring road, in the scheme? Other sort of clean air zones around the country that I'm aware of, where there's a ring road that's a boundary, you can drive up to the ring road and run the ring road, as long as you don't go in inside, you're not subject to the charge. Why are we doing it the other way? Why are we putting the road that's there to take traffic out of our communities, out of, you know, not going past our shops and houses and schools, and saying, don't drive on that, drive past our shops and houses and schools? Why are we doing that?
Okay, I'll start with that last point. As I think we're all aware, the inner ring road in Sheffield is under severe pressure many times of the day, and that is because it is predominantly acting as the ring road around Sheffield. You know, I've mentioned that the outer ring road, there is a partial outer ring road, but not a full one, and therefore, the amount of traffic on it is part of the air quality challenge in Sheffield. So what our appraisal has shown is that the inner ring road could not be excluded from action and treatment, so it's within the zone to have that influence in terms of the need to improve air quality. So that's why it is included. In terms of other locations, our assessment has had to look at all location across Sheffield to ensure that they are compliant. So given that we've got that full and wide diffusion tube monitoring, that those sites have all been looked at as part of that forecasting and appraisal. The Midland Station, early through the process, in discussions with DEFRA and Jacku, it was confirmed that Midland Station itself is not a location that is included within that compliance assessment. The reason for that is that it is not within a close proximity to the highway and road transport, which is the direct, specific direction we've got through the Clean Air Plan. We do know that that doesn't mean that the significant levels of air pollution at the station are not an issue, they absolutely are. We, as a result of taking action as part of the Clean Air Zone, we know that there will be a move towards improving the black cab, black cab and taxi fleet. So at the station taxi rank, there's clearly issues at the moment. We think that those will be significantly improved as the fleet improves, but some of the issues at the station are very much in relation to the diesel trains that are serving the city. Obviously, there has been previous commitments and then decisions to no longer commit to the electrification of the Midland Main Line, and Sheffield clearly does have an issue in terms of what that means to us as a city, not least as a result of the air quality challenges that that poses.
Well, thank you for that. I must say, I'm not convinced that pushing the traffic off the ring road into the neighbouring urban areas isn't going to create more pollution, and more pollution closer to where people have to breathe it in than allowing it to stay on the ring road. Now, if you're saying we need to reduce the number of the ring road, I accept that, although actually, some of the locations on the ring road are not as bad as some of the locations in places like Burngrieve in this data. But, you know, obviously, you know, I hear what you've said. I would be quite glad to see the modelling that you've talked about and see what the predictions are, and then perhaps we can, you know, monitor it afterwards and see where. And then perhaps we can, you know, monitor it afterwards and see whether whether this displacement is happening or not. Let me, let me ask a slightly more practical question. An obvious problem, I think, with including the ring road in the scheme is that you approach the ring road and there's a sign saying you're entering a charging area. Now presumably, there's going to be a sign saying to avoid the charging area, you've got to turn off here. Is that, is that what's going to happen? Or is it, should I say, is it going to be a gotcha, sorry mate, you're now having to, you know, without knowing it, you're now into the charging zone, you have to pay a charge?
So the signing that we will be providing will inform drivers of the presence of the charging zone. And that will be on those approaches towards the charging zone. But we will not be proactively signing diversions to the charging zone. And we do not want to promote diversions to the charging zone, particularly because not all vehicles will be charged and not all vehicles that are in the charging threshold. So CASC, for example, is is taxis, buses, et cetera, et cetera, HGVs, LGVs. Not all of those vehicles will be non-compliant. So we we do not want to be proactively diverting traffic. What we, what the the primary aim of the Clean Air Zone programme nationally is to use the charging mechanisms as a push for change. And it's the change in the fleet that is crucial. They are not designed to just displace traffic to other places. They are designed to encourage people to change. And as part of that, that's why it's essential that we have the financial support packages to assist and enable people and those fleets that need support to change, that we can do that. And as part of the consultation that we'll be launching, we'll be providing the details of those consult, of those financial support packages. And we really do want to hear from people, whether it's L G V van drivers or whether it's taxi drivers or others, that actually, you know, what their views on that are, so that we can refine those and make them as attractive as possible within the, some of the boundaries that we've we've got within the funds.
Well, thank you for that answer. I'm still not clear from that. If I'm driving, let's say, along Ecclesall Road into town in my delivery van, for the sake of argument, and there'll be a sign saying congestion, sorry, a charging zone ahead for air quality, will I see that sign in in time to turn off up Summerfield Street or something, or will it be too late when I see that sign?
So there will be points along approaches to locations where you can enter the inner ring road, where there will be signing. So again, signs across the country are defined in terms of the regulations and where we need to apply those. And we've we've looked at that across the city in terms of most appropriate locations to, advise drivers on the approach to the ring road of where where the charging scheme and the boundary of the zone starts. So it isn't just, you know, you're driving down Ecclesall Road and you get to the junction with the inner ring road and there's a sign saying you're now in a charging zone. There will be advanced signing, but it will not be proactively encouraging drivers to to divert onto specific routes.
All right, okay. So I I I'm slightly reassured that, you know, it's not a completely a gotcha scheme. I think in practice, you are going to obviously have traffic going, going on those routes up Summerfield Street, up towards, towards Sharrow, for example, through Sharrow, through Netherthorpe, through the Manor and through Burngrieve, as we've said. Let me just, okay, let me just move on to one last, one last question, I suppose, and that is where where do we go from here? Because, like I said, for the reasons I've, okay, I'm not convinced this will, this will achieve us the compliance we're looking for. But at the same time, there is a move towards electric vehicles more generally. So do we, you know, are we expecting this scheme to become more, you know, larger or to include more vehicles over time in order to achieve the compliance? Or or do we think we might just be able to sit where we are? The vehicles will all become electric in a decade or two and we can take it all out again. Is that, is that a more likely end game?
So I guess there's a few issues there. The first is to be really clear that our current direction is to implement a category C charging zone. It it isn't to do anything else. It's not a forerunner to anything else. The direction is very specific. And that's the scheme that we're developing and have now got approval to to move forward with. There will be a very clear charging order that sets out all of the specifics, including exemptions. So the report and the appendix to the report last week sets out those exemptions that we're considering and the rationale behind those. Some of those are national, some of them are local, and we'll obviously want views on those as part of the consultation as well. That's really important for us in refining and finalising those. In terms of how the scheme kind of moves forward beyond implementation. So we've had recent discussions with the Joint Air Quality Unit, sorry, I've been calling it Jack U as if, but it's the Joint Air Quality Unit within the Department for Environment. We've, we've had a discussion about what their expectations are in terms of saying, yes, that that compliance, which we're trying to achieve as quickly as possible, that compliance is met. And therefore, there can be, you know, either a turning off of a zone or or kind of, you know, the whether the monitoring and evaluation requires us to continue that. So the measure of success is what we've had that discussion on. So the compliance that we're required to achieve is a full annual average year of compliance under that forty microgram level for nitrogen dioxide. So the monitoring that we're doing and the monitoring that that we'll be working collaboratively with the Joint Air Quality Unit on needs to establish whether that has been achieved. When that's been achieved, there is also then a requirement to say that if if charging is no longer required, then the success that has been achieved doesn't just revert back. So there are times and thresholds that will be, need to be met in monitoring and evaluating our scheme before we can get to that point of saying, yes, actually, it's it's met compliance. And then, yes, there is a confidence that the zone is no longer required. So there are, there are, will be time periods to assess that in, some of which will depend on that monitoring and evaluation information that comes back.
Okay, thank you very much. Chair, if I may, one final question to councillor Johnson. Politically, how do you feel about freeing up space on the inner ring road for private cars?
I'm not sure this Clean Air Plan actually has anything to do with that, really.
Clearly councillor Johnson, the delivery vans and the mini buses and the taxis have been directed through Sharrow and Nether Edgewood. And there'll be therefore more space in the ring road for the private motorists, won't there?
No, not really.
Thank you. Just to clarify, it is, this has been imposed on us by the government. This is not something we just want to, you know, wish out of the thin air. This is something that we've got to do.
So yes, since 2010, there has been a national requirement to achieve compliance with with the EU threshold levels that I've mentioned. Since 2017, Sheffield and Rotherham have had a specific legal direction, that mandate from government to take action on clean air. And at all stages of the project, so the main one was last year, they have mandated that in response to the work we did to assess those options, that they have agreed that the category C zone is the scheme that we need to deliver. So there is a ministerial direction on as a legal obligation to take forward that action.
Thank you. That's what I thought. councillor Argenzio?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, my questions have mostly been answered. I just wanted to say that thank you very much for the report and thank you very much for all the hard work that has led to this coming into force, although it's not, you know, perfect. As you just said, it's, you know, a mandate from central government. I was, I I think the impact on this particularly on practicality to do with the uncertainty around licensing, for example, for taxis. I sit on the Licensing Subcommittee and there has been confusion and apprehension about what was coming in. So I think this is, this at least will clarify what people need to comply with. And the fact that the compliance is actually more affordable now, that what was originally envisaged, I think it's going to hopefully, you know, appease taxi drivers and they can start saving up for whatever they need to change their older vehicles, non-compliant. So I was wondering how, apart from the consultation, have we got any plans to put some kind of communication out there or what? Because I think lots of people still, taxi drivers still think that they need to buy an electric vehicle and that is a daunting kind for most families. You know, they are, the prices are prohibitive for most families. So will there be something out there to say, you don't have to, you you can if you want with some support, but you don't have to? Because I think it would really help emotionally. I think they've been under a lot of pressure. Thank you.
So, thank you, yes. There will be specific engagement with our taxi drivers in Sheffield. We will be having meetings with with taxi trades organisations. And, you know, I think, I think you're right. There was clearly been a scheme that was proposed with certain standards previously. We did the citywide engagement at that time, again, you know, open to everybody to respond to, but some specific focused engagement where we were setting out what the requirements for taxi drivers at that point was. And it was to move to electric, it was to to move to ultra-low emission vehicles quickly. There has been that change now in terms of what our proposals include. So that minimum compliance Euro six diesel, Euro four petrol, it is far more deliverable and affordable in many ways for drivers. So we do need to get that message back in front of of all of those people that are potentially affected. As well as the the desire to encourage as many of those people as possible to to move to electric or ultra-low emission. Certainly for private hire fleets, I think it's probably obvious to lots of people as you you walk around the city centre and other places that that hybrid vehicles are kind of commonplace in the private hire fleet at the moment and increasing in numbers. But moving to electric is, is again, obviously something that we would like to promote kind of quite significantly in line with our net zero ambitions. And I think the report does make reference to the fact that through licensing, there there will be consideration in terms of at what point does the licensing standard for vehicles in line with our climate emergency and net zero ambitions need to move towards an electric vehicle standard to ensure that, you know, people are aware that that is the the direction of travel and the decarbonisation of vehicles across the city is a key part. As councillor Jones picked up earlier, the report does make reference to transport emissions, carbon emissions are the heaviest from the transport sector in Sheffield. So and again, encouraging them so that sustainability, if if there is a change to licensing policy that, you know, further within this decade, there is a shift to electric standards, that actually this opportunity now is there to encourage as many people to move to that as possible. We've, we've worked really hard to, to, within our liaison with government, to to get to those higher levels of support, given that we know that the financial challenges to the taxi trade have been significant. And the costs of shifting and switching are not insubstantial. So it's very positive that we've got a fairly substantial support to get to minimum compliance. And then further support should people want to to look at, you know, a more sustainable option.
And just to add, just, just after the executive made the decision last week to implement the and bring that certainty to the trader, I was having to get a text from one particular taxi driver just saying, thanks for doing that. It's the, it's the reassurance that they know where they are now. So I think that message could, will have got around the taxi trade pretty quickly now.
Thank you. councillor Fipps? Did you, did you not indicate? Sorry, there were that many people put their hand up, sorry. So councillor Auckland next then.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering, so we can all think about how a surplus might be invested in our own words? How you would characterize, Tom, the typical revenue surplus after costs? Whether it's over the period of the monitoring or what you might expect, you know, during each financial year? On modelling, from what you've been saying, I take it that the modelling is like flexible, dynamic. It's going to be used in reporting to central government and we're going to use it ourselves. And presumably, we'll be able to match the modelling against, as it were, actual data that we've been able to gather. And I just wonder then, does that mean that the scheme will evolve year by year or after so many years? Is it fixed now until, I don't know, whenever, five years' time or whatever? I've just got a particular concern about public transport and bus services in particular. So we were able to rein back on some of the conditions because because the conditions changed, I think, due to due to the impact of Covid and different ways of working. I think that's the reason why we were able to relax taxi standards. But at the moment, I observe, simply observe from from going about myself, that to me, traffic volumes seem to be at pre-pandemic levels. I'd suggest the distribution of that traffic volume's changed, so there's, there's no longer a morning peak and an afternoon peak. Meanwhile, public transport, primarily bus, the service intervals are getting longer. The obviously frequency, it then suffers. Reliability is, is suffering at the moment. And that could be a real problem if we feed seventy-five percent level of public transport use, nine percent for commuter trips and same car volume into the modelling. It might mean we would have to, we would have to change what we're doing. So my final plea would be, let's not change what we have to do as far as it's in our control until we've got a decent public transport system going, particularly a bus service. I have a chance to read my Dan Jarvis's lengthy document on this. It falls short of where I would have been, but it does promise improvement. And the two have to go together if we're going to ask, if we're going to have to ask, you know, other people using the highway network to make sacrifices. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you councillor Auckland. Again, I'll try and work through those as best I can, but do flag if I miss anything. So in terms of the funding, and again, you know, this is based on forecasts and based on model information. The 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 expectations around the category C are that obviously, the income that we receive, the first thing that needs to be done is that it needs to be managed in terms of the cost of the scheme. So the the costs of actually managing and operating the scheme are not insubstantial. And that's something that is first off the list. In terms of a surplus, what we're, what we're projecting is that there could be a fairly significant surplus. But we obviously won't know what that actually looks like or what the the recidivism, you know, in terms of people becoming more compliant over time and therefore the implications on that income over time will be. As I mentioned earlier, what we're finding is that in Bath and Birmingham, that rate of compliance is is far sharper than than had been expected. So the surplus, when that's captured, will need to be managed as a programme and, you know, clear decision. know, clear decisions made around what we use that funding for. The initial period of the scheme going live is forecast to have a higher surplus, and I think in the first, first full year, I think it's about two and a half million pounds that we're currently forecasting could be the surplus. But again, those need to be treated with some caution, because actually that will be dependent on the, the real information when that flows through. And, and that's the kind of scaling the first year through to kind of a year, you know, subject to compliance being achieved and that, that success factor that I mentioned earlier being agreed with Jacku, potentially year, year four, you're down to, you know, well under a million pounds in terms of any net surplus. So we'll be looking at that really carefully, in line with our reporting and transparency around other income through transport activity like parking and bus lanes, we will clearly and openly, transparently publish that information. And I know that Birmingham at the moment will be, we're all sharing best practice with this, they're publishing fully, the, the level of non-compliance, the level of people that are going in and paying, the level of people that are going in and are compliant, and how that's changing on a quarterly basis. So we, we will be establishing all of that as part of that broader monitoring and evaluation piece.
Chair, I wouldn't necessarily be too reticent on the prospect of some money coming in for local transport schemes, if that's what it can be spent on, because as board members, we have a long, long list of things, and we don't generally come along and ask you to do things like speed the traffic up, or build a dual carriageway, or something like that. We generally have to crossings and safer routes to schools and 20 mile an hour zones, so it, it could relieve some of the pressure on that side of things. Even, even, even adamant car drivers come to us asking for improvements on their road.
So, so yes, that programme is to be defined, but it, it's, the funding is, is there in a ringfenced nature to deliver those improvements. As I said earlier, to be determined, and clearly there will be a need for us to look at how that zone is performing, and if there is need to do more in any sense, then that again is probably going to be one of the first places for that funding to do more. In terms of whether the scheme's fixed or, or changeable, the scheme is a category C charging zone, there is a statutory process that we have to go, go through and are going through to deliver that. So there is no intention of change. It will be based on, on that category C zone, trying to encourage those drivers to improve their fleets as, as quickly as possible. The, the, the one issue that we, we can't kind of second guess is whether there is a change nationally to the compliance standard for success. So whilst we're not aware that this is the case, if in two, three years' time it's considered that the current legal levels that we're trying to achieve are not, no longer appropriate and lower levels, as the World Health Organisation recently announced, are more appropriate because 40 micrograms, they don't consider to be a safe level, but a lower level has been considered by them and recommended by them. But that is not adopted and enshrined into kind of primary legislation for us to, to achieve. So there, there have to be some caveats, you know, you could never say never, but for what we know at the moment, the scheme in front of us is certainly the scheme we'll deliver, and, and there may be some changes at localised hotspots should they emerge, or not, not respond in as quick a fashion as we'd expect through the charging zone, but fundamentally, it's a charging, category, category C charging zone. Traffic volumes in the peaks as a result of kind of where we are at the moment and the implications around public transport, I, I think you're right, you know, I think people moving around the city can probably see that actually even the peaks are becoming peakier, certainly during the core period of the pandemic, the, the kind of peak was a flat peak, it was almost like a loaf of bread within the middle of the day that extended through, the peaks were, were no longer there. But they are becoming far more, you know, our network is becoming far more congested and busy at peak times. The implication, as you say, is that public transport hasn't rebounded as quickly. So I think we're forecasting at the moment that by March next year, then it could be an 80% return to previous public transport levels. At the moment, in South Yorkshire, the, the levels in Sheffield are slightly lower percentage wise than they are in, in some of the other districts. But the, the key issue there is that cities are, again, responding to that recovery in a different way to, to towns, and that actually what we're seeing is that some of the, some of the services within the city centre, professional services are more adapting to, you know, flexible working, so that will be having an impact. It, it's a key issue, and again, in that broader than kind of the clean air zone implication, something that we're looking at very carefully, because clearly, we, we don't want people to, to choose potentially no longer returning to public transport and seeking more, less sustainable ways of, of getting to point A to B. Within that rounded position around our climate ambitions and responding to the emergency, we do need to encourage as many people onto attractive public transport as possible. I got the bus in today and it was far busier than I'd expected it to be, and that was in the middle of the day. The, 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 the issue there is that there are those wider things, the bus service improvement plan, the proposals around the enhanced partnership, some of which still need to be developed in the detail and become clear in terms of the benefits to customers in Sheffield. But that is, that, that does need to be seen as a, as a key priority. We, we can't move to a place where public transport is more lightly used than it has been, that recovery of public transport patronage and the growth in that is going to be key.
But in summary, that doesn't affect what we've got, legal order, category C, that's it.
That, that's right. It's probably worthwhile just touching briefly, if I may, on, on some of those impacts around Covid. So as part of our review, we did work closely with the Joint Air Quality Unit on some of those issues that were uncertain at that time, but we looked across a broad range of, of measures in terms of what the, the longer term implications of, of Covid on behaviour change and transport in particular, and trips across the city might be. Some of those are positive, some of those are negative, and depending on how they come forward, you know, that, that balance of overall positive, overall negative will be influenced. Clearly, if it's, if it's just an increase in people using private cars more frequently or in greater numbers, then that's negative, but there are some broader, more positive behavioural changes that, that do arise from, some of the implications arising from what we've experienced over the last 18 months in terms of behaviour change, whether that's shopping more locally, whether that's more working more flexibly from home and other places. So in, in short, because of the significant uncertainties around that recovery and what the impacts might be, the uncertainties were too great for, for government to be able to sign off on, on kind of locking in, you know, issues, behaviour change arising from Covid moving forward. So that, we, we are, we have looked at it, but it isn't in our current measures, and it, it cannot be included in our current appraisal.
In your assessment then, Tom, though, are you basically saying, at this stage, you would agree it's six of one and half a dozen of the other in terms of benefit, disbenefit?
I, I think in terms of the appraisal that we undertook, of those that we considered to be maybe more likely longer term implications, I think there was potentially a broadly positive position. But again, those, those assumptions, we, you know, as part of our monitoring and evaluation, the whole range of measures that we'll be looking at, we, we will see where we get to with that. But yes, it was, it was slightly positive in terms of that, that scale.
Thank you, councillor Lodge.
Yeah, thanks Chair. A, a couple of comments that came out from things, just before questions, it's quite interesting when you talk about the, the station and, and the impact of air quality and trains down there, that the one thing that seems to be in the responsibility of the government, as in, they can determine what happens down there, they ignore it, yet they, they expect local authorities to implement actions that impact on, on residents and people who use the city. So it seems a little bit bizarre that the government sort of do as I say, not do as I do type thing. So it's, you know, it's one of the things that we have to face, I suppose. Tom, I understand the current trends are, are seeing an improvement, and it's sort of going on from what councillor Auckland was saying, the last 18 months have seen air quality improving across the city for a number of reasons, particularly around Covid, where there's been a, a change in, in people's habits and things moving through. But there's been other issues, there's, there's been other, other sort of things that are in there as well that have, that have impacted. So you, you look at the Greater Green that's come out since the, since the assessments were done in 2017 or so, where we're looking at the air quality that the government then instructed us. So things like the, the, the Greater Green that's gone on, the, the council renewing a lot of our fleet, and there's, I think it's 250 odd vehicles and now electric vehicles from the council fleet, and we continue doing that. The, the, the measures undertaken, you know, with, with construction and things in the city centre that's going on and pushing more towards the district heating, and, and all these sort of measures that we've been doing for a number of years in Sheffield, very successful in continuing through. But, so if, if the trend is seeing an improvement, and some of these measures are already working, how, how far is it moving in the right direction so that we don't? We, we have to implement the zone, but how, how close are we, I suppose in effect, to turning around and saying, you know what, if it continues like this, we won't need to turn, turn things on? Because we've seen that Leeds have said that they've got the improvements, that they've, they've got the scheme and they're going through with the infrastructure, but they don't need to turn it on. So how close are we in Sheffield to that sort of? It's the tipping point, I suppose, really, in as to where we need to turn the scheme on, or we don't need to turn the scheme on? Because I think that would be helpful for some of the, for the, for clarity on what it means to people in Sheffield. I think there's some, the, the, you know, the, the things that were put through from the outline business case that was put forward in, in 2018, and the government ruled on in, in 2020 and put that through for us, and then delayed things because of Covid, that's highlighted a number of things, and you can see changes. I think it's good and it's common sense that we've looked at the taxi standard and bringing it in line with the national standards on, on clean air zones, to Euro four for petrol and Euro six for diesel. And I, and I think it's also positive news that's coming out from the bus, the two major operators, they say most of their fleet, we've seen that reported, most of their fleets will be compliant by the time we need to look at, at doing this. So all these sort of things are pointing in that direction, that things are improving. So I just think clarification really on where we are, and, and if the trend continues, do we need to, to switch on the, the scheme, the system, if you like?
Thank you. Yeah, and I agree, you know, the, the, kind of maybe what I've not mentioned, and maybe what the report doesn't mention maybe enough, is, is some of those really positive things that have happened and are continuing to happen. And, and, and the council's role in that in terms of supporting, certainly in terms of, you mentioned the buses and the upgrading the fleet to a compliant fleet across Sheffield. A major factor in that has been the funding that the council has secured from government previously as part of a Clean Bus Technology Fund application to take forward retrofits of, of existing vehicles. And, you know, a significant proportion of the fleets have gone through that programme and are now equivalent to a Euro six standard. So improvements are happening on an ongoing basis. The, I guess the, the, the more, simplest way of kind of setting out what that looks like in terms of our appraisal is almost the do nothing test. So we have a baseline and we have a forecast of, of various things in terms of how fleets will change in Sheffield as a natural cycle of people upgrading their vehicles over time, and obviously how background air quality may change over time as well. We've got within our transport model, you know, where we know with greater certainty that development may come forward in the city as well. So we're not a static place, you know, it's a, it's a developing, growing place, that is included in, in, in there as well. So that do nothing test is, is how long would it take to reach almost natural compliance? And, and at the moment, our forecast is that it would be 2024, that if, if we did nothing, that that would be the point at which we'd tip below that 40 microgram level. Obviously, uncertainty in all modelling, air quality is very much dependent on a range of factors, some of which are completely out of control, of anybody's control, such as the weather. So, you know, there are those, those factors to take account of. So in terms of the, the direction, the legal duty that we've got to, to achieve compliance in that shortest possible time, the reason it's the shortest possible time is because of those health, wider health impacts across the, the country and within the city, so that we're making that change as soon as possible to make those improvements to, to people's lives. So the 2022 target for us to achieve compliance would be two years in advance of that natural compliance. But we're continuing, and again, the, the, the position that Leeds got to is that they committed to their category B zone, which was a fairly large category B zone, and they took forward the financial support to all those vehicles that would be covered in that. They've, they locked in a number of those changes when people had drawn down that funding and upgraded their vehicles. And again, last year, their appraisal and their assessment, working with government, was that those locked in benefits meant that they had achieved compliance. We, we're obviously not aware of all the detailed discussions of that, but that's their broad position, and at the moment, they are not intending to turn on the zone that had effectively been implemented in, in Leeds. Other places are not in that position and are moving forwards to deliver in a similar position to ourselves. And we expect that we'll be in a, a place to launch those financial support measures in spring next year. But for some of those established kind of relationships, like the Clean Bus Technology Fund, we'll be in a place where it's almost an extension of existing programmes. And things in advance of then, so we've, we've launched our EV van trial scheme, which is really popular and, and has got waiting lists at the moment. An EV taxi trial scheme is, is planned as well. So there, there are, will be additional measures that we're taking forward.
If, if I may, Chair, so Leeds did it where they, they signed up, they got these commitments, and so people changed the fleets and did things like that. So are you saying that from spring, if we've got this financial support to people and they make that commitment, that we could be in a position that we turn around and say, you know what, we're going to achieve it, so we don't need to turn on the, the, the system, if you like, and start the charging? Is that, is that feasible, that we get into that? Or is it something that, you know, if, if we get to a point that we say, actually, it's coming October 2022, but we know in January we're going to be clear? Are there the, the opportunity for us? Because I know with some of the, the support measures and the, the exceptions that we can use are, are where we, we can consider, from reading the report, where we can consider that, that people are making those changes, but there are time constraints. Clearly, if there is clean air zones coming across the country, not everybody's been able, be able to get the vehicles that, that comply because supply and demand is, is going to go up. So how realistic is the proposal, is the, how realistic is it that we could be faced with putting all this system in, but then we don't need to because we are seeing improvements in air quality? And we all want to see the air quality improving, you know, one death is too many, but 500 that, that's attributed to it is shocking for a city of Sheffield size. So it's the right thing to do, but it's also, we have to consider the wider impact on the economy, and that's where we're looking at things, I suppose.
Yep. So I, I, I think from our, from our assessment, the, the, I think the, the simplest way to, to respond to that is that our assessment has shown that the category C zone will be required to achieve compliance. Without that, we are forecasting that we wouldn't achieve compliance in 2022, which is the, the aim, to achieve compliance in that shortest possible time. And without actually turning on a zone... actually turning on a zone, that we wouldn't achieve compliance. So in terms of the transition to cleaning up the fleet in Sheffield, we think that the requirements around the zone are part of that. If we don't move forward and turn on, then it's unlikely that we will achieve compliance because actually that natural compliance is 2024. The rate of change, as you say, is something that we'll be keeping an eye on. We will be undertaking further surveys of the fleet across Sheffield in a regular period as part of the delivery of the scheme. But at this point in time, I think my advice to you is that we should expect to be turning on that zone in late autumn next year to achieve the compliance that's required. And the monitoring that I mentioned that we need to undertake with Jack U highlights that we need to make sure that we have achieved that in that year from monitored data, and that for a period after that, changing, you know, and turning off a scheme, we would need to make sure that we would still achieve compliance in that period after. So we've only started discussions with government on that. And it's not just us, it's other places as well, even Bath, Birmingham and Bristol and other places, Manchester are in that same room having the same conversation with Jack U. But yes, at this point, I think the expectation is that we will be turning on a skip a zone next year to complement the delivery of that change in Sheffield.
Thank you. And just a final point in that, and just a question for councillor Johnson. It's interesting that, it will be interesting to see the impact of other things, because I think as a city, we are in a position where we have the combined heating power that comes out from the district heating system and things that come through there. So it'd be interesting to look at things about the impact of that. So, you know, it's almost, and people have heard me say this before, it's almost where planning ought to be, where linking up to the district heating system is the du rire and not by exception. It should be, you know, that's what it should be. And then arguments against why they're connecting up to it rather than making the arguments to connect up to it. Because that clearly helps on air quality if we're reducing things there. I think we've got a system here in Sheffield Light Rail that comes in that we ought to be using more in the evenings and things like that for deliveries coming in and out of the city centre, when the trams are not running through, that we can use it and stop vehicles, whether the Euro six diesel or Euro four petrol, and, you know, looking at using that system in the downtime that's there. So there's a lot more things that are coming through. So it'd be interesting to see how we are and where things move. But it's a question really to councillor Johnson. You've been reported as saying you don't see it's far enough and you would support, you would prefer a zone that sees charging for private vehicles. You preferred a CASD, which I think is all private vehicles and things as well. And do you still stand by that comment that you think we should be charging all private vehicles coming into the city centre on the ring road and coming through, when clearly we start to be in a position now where the economy is not so strong, we shouldn't be charging people just for travelling around and things? But do you still stand by that comment that you think everybody should be charged for coming on the ring road?
Yes, thanks. I actually agree with a lot of what you said of that, that the CAS is an important step, but it's only one step in cleaning up air. Also, that we have to really keep on going well beyond the CAS, because as you say, five hundred deaths a year in Sheffield is five hundred deaths too many. And we've got the new World Health Organisation guidelines that no one's really grappled with yet, so it's good to see them in the report there, talking about, you know, a maximum limit of ten micrograms per cubic metre as opposed to the current legal limit of forty. But, yeah, my comments on the CAS, the position that we took on the original consultation on the CAS was to say that the council should at least consult on the prospect of charging private cars. It had at that point already made a commitment that private cars couldn't be charged under any circumstances. So we are where we are with that. But we said that, I certainly said that, we should at least be consulting on that. It's fair to say that, yeah, if I were the government, I would have designed an entirely, well, a different clean air framework. And it would have been about eliminating those unnecessary journeys coming into the city centre. It's often been said, hasn't it, that it does seem a bit crazy charging public transport of those drivers who actually need to be in the city centre and have a legitimate business reason for being there, and not charging those drivers who just choose to drive in when they could get on the bus or the tram. But that is where we are. That is not the scheme that the government designed. And, you know, we are where we are. On the broader point, though, I think that there is something to be said where, and if we look at what you were hinting at, so in councillor Lodge, about the prospect of if there is a significant step change that is better than his forecast at the moment, it is possible that we could end up in the same situation as Leeds, where it wasn't actually necessary to bring in the charging, if people face up to this. We are in a situation where, in fact, those drivers of private cars who are not going to be charged under the CAS can still help contribute to the overall good of the city by avoiding driving their cars into the city centre unless it's absolutely necessary. The more people we can get to leave their cars at home and get on the bus or tram, or even walk and cycle if there's a distance there, the more people can get to do that, that will contribute to the ongoing measurement of hopefully falling air pollution levels and will contribute to the probability that we can avoid actually bringing in charges at the back end of 2022. So it is incumbent on everyone who's got a vehicle to see what changes they can make to contribute to the good of the whole city.
Thank you.
And if I may, just one final question, and it's a councillor Johnson, you know, we've heard Tom turn around and say, and in the report, it talks about eighteen month delay that's in there because of Covid and because of things in there. So do you not think it's a little bit disingenuous when you were quoted in the Star that said the previous administration didn't have the courage to do it and kicked it into long grass when the proposals that are now seen implemented are actually the proposals of the previous administration?
Maybe not disingenuous, we are where we are. We've pushed to get this done. I mean, as being a Green Party politician, we've campaigned on clean air for a number of years. We said there should be a clean air zone, even if this isn't a perfect one. We are getting there now. And it is reassuring, actually, to hear that everyone now is saying that actually clean air is important, the five hundred deaths a year. You know, we're all on the same page in that respect. It does take time to change around those attitudes towards, you know, private vehicle ownership, I'm afraid. But actually, people are recognising more and more the health benefits and the choices that are made. And really, the big thing about the CAS now is that it's just a bit of a lever on those personal choices that people make. And hopefully, it will also help with, you know, getting some money into the local economy for upgrading those vehicles and it will make the city much cleaner. So I don't think there's anything we need to, you know, get too hung up about. The clean air zone is coming in later than I would have liked, but it is here now.
Well, just perhaps I used the wrong word in disingenuous, misrepresenting then? Because in the report, it says eighteen months delay because of Covid, and from Tom, it said eighteen months delay because of Covid. In the Star, you were reported as saying the previous administration didn't have the courage. Now, as I, you know, I'll repeat it to you, do you not think that's misrepresenting then? Because the proposals that are going in are the proposals of the previous administration. If it's taken eighteen months because of Covid, that's nothing to do with the previous administration not having the courage to do it?
Sure. If you want the purely political answer, we criticised the administration for previous administration, or several previous administrations, for not getting on with action on air quality long before Covid was even dreamt of. With hindsight, we could always say that action on anything should have been done earlier. We did say that in relation to air quality, but we are, we are. I fully take your point, though, councillor Lodge.
Thank you. Councillor Richards?
Gosh. My question, I suppose, is slightly outside this but connected, which is that we're saying that we will have the zone for the city centre and that lorries, vans, taxis, whoever, will be charged for using our inner city roads. But at the same time, we know that the M1 corridor is creating enormous pollution for Tinsley, Darnell and also for Winkerbank. And we know that Meadow Hall will still continue to have all its large delivery lorries coming in and out as they wish, also adding to the pollution for Tinsley and Winkerbank and, I guess, bits of Rotherham as well. And also, we have the shopping corridor of Carbrook, Carbrook Road, and none of that will be affected by the clean air zone but will continue to be polluted. So what are we going to be able to do to support the people living in those areas who seem to have been forgotten while city centre is cleaned up?
Thank you, councillor Richards.
Sorry, and I just meant to ask you, Tom, when you came on the bus, how many people were wearing masks today? That's just curiosity on my part.
Don't start with that one. I probably, I was wearing a mask and I think probably fifty percent of the bus was probably wearing masks.
Which I think perhaps explains why people are still using cars more than they might do otherwise.
Potentially. And just on the wider position, so yes, we know that there are kind of, there are problems with air quality across the city. And it is a real challenge sometimes, and I probably don't do a great job occasionally of trying to describe it, but the HGVs, van drivers, they generally deliver or operate across different areas. That might be different cities, it might be, you know, into the city centre or into Rotherham Town Centre and other places. So in terms of the influence of the charging zone that's proposed, whilst it is within the kind of core city centre area, the influence and the impact arising out of the change that we're forecasting will have a bigger reach. So HGVs that deliver into the city centre will inevitably probably deliver into Meadow Hall, deliver into some other local centres as well and Rotherham Town Centre. So that change, or they may deliver into Manchester or to other places that have got other charging zones. So that change is, we believe, going to have a bigger reach rather than just improving air quality in Sheffield city centre. Again, buses, a lot of them come into the city centre but are cross city. And therefore, we are working with the bus operators closely to improve all of the fleet across Sheffield. Obviously, those that go in and out of the city centre, they will have that benefit in terms of cleaner emissions in places like Broome Hill or in the Lower Don Valley and Tinsley, Darnell, Atcliffe. But we want buses that aren't going in and out of the city centre to be as clean as those that do as well. So our intention is not that it's just city centre access having a benefit, but the wider bus network will be upgraded to the minimum compliance levels as well. And again, taxis predominantly go in and out of the city centre, not exclusively. But again, that's something that we've monitored, we've modelled, and we believe that the implications and the impacts of our city centre scheme and targeting the twenty percent of the fleet that broadly drives around the city, which is having a fifty percent of the emissions from that twenty percent of the fleet, will have that bigger impact across the city. Just on the M1, because again, that's been a known issue for a number of years. In particular, drilling down into Tinsley, the southbound On Slip Road, so very much adjacent to Tinsley, is one of those locations that was identified as a significant hotspot from Highways England monitoring. Obviously, the broader network, they've introduced a speed limit reduction. Again, that is predominantly in relation to adjusting speed to adjust the emissions from the vehicles that are going along that stretch of the M1. And it's in for a much longer period than some of those other smart motorway sections that is just managing congestion during the peaks. So that is having an influence, that's having an impact. At the southbound On Slip Road in Tinsley, Highways England, who manage that network, had previously proposed to put an air quality barrier up adjacent to the On Slip Road. Again, their modelling, their forecasting and analysis have shown that actually, in that shortest possible time, that actually the air quality levels there will be below the legal threshold levels without intervention. So they do not propose to introduce that air quality barrier anymore because it gets them to that minimum level of compliance. And I think this is that broader point in terms of what does minimum level of compliance mean to the people that are living in those communities? And actually, what is a safe level of air quality? At the moment, our legal direction and Highways England's requirements are to achieve minimum levels of compliance, legal compliance. And that is the task that the Clean Air Zone framework, the National Air Quality Plan, that government have set out, requires us to do. And, you know, I could comment on some of that, but actually, in terms of the scheme that we've developed in response to that, and the way in which Highways England have taken decisions on infrastructure that may or may not be needed, it is in relation to that position.
I'm just wondering whether the effect will be, you know, as we've talked about the city centre, that businesses or large multinational chain stores and things would just say, will just carry on being in Meadow Hall and will stop using the city centre so that we can just come off the Slip Road, go to Meadow Hall, do a spot of polluting, and then go back again, rather than going into the city centre where they would be charged?
I think from our, again, from our local review of the fleet in Sheffield and how that's changed over time, we've been on this project for nearly four years, I think we're aware that heavy goods vehicles, those big delivery kind of to those multinationals probably, they are far cleaner now than they ever have been. And actually, you know, in some of our more recent surveys, almost very close to kind of ninety plus percent compliance. So some of them are very clean, very compliant, and I expect that some of them that are delivering, you know, to Nottingham, to Sheffield, to Rotherham, to Doncaster, they will be the companies, the fleets that have probably continued to invest in improving their vehicles, maybe not just because of air quality implications, albeit the national agenda around that and the rise of clean air zones on the horizon probably has a bit of an influence on that. But there are other efficiency and kind of operating benefits of having reliable, cleaner, more efficient fleets. So I think the risks that you've raised are probably not significant. I think some of the broader ambitions around the city centre and why the city centre is a great place to invest in, I personally believe that having a clean air environment in the city centre and across the city is one of those things that will attract people to Sheffield. We've had some really positive coverage recently around Sheffield's, you know, sustainability credentials, you know, on a national basis. And I think that is a real attractor to people now, more than it ever has been in terms of where they may want to live, where they may want to work, where they may want to invest. So I think actually, part of our clean air ambitions, the health benefits, the environmental benefits to that, we really should be kind of capturing as a differentiator for the city.
So do we now see Burngreeve becoming an up and coming area where people will want to move on the basis of all the things that we have said about traffic being dispersed along our roads?
So clearly, you know, I think we will be looking at all of those issues carefully. You know, we are aware that there are potential implications as a result of clean air zones. And we are, you know, we are familiar to some of those. The way in which we will respond to that... The way in which we will respond to that, I've mentioned. But, you know, what we want to see is a progressive improvement of air quality. We need a progressive improvement to our transport system. And, you know, that might take longer, it's in line with our transport strategy ambitions that the council's adopted. It's in line with some of the really successful announcements recently, again, the kind of investment into sustainable transport, recent budget announcements that a further £570 million will come to the region. A significant amount of that will be spent in Sheffield to do more really good things, to encourage people to cycle that may not even think about that now because the infrastructure just isn't there, and they don't feel safe and comfortable. We want to progressively move towards that network where it isn't seen as a, something that is just for those that are confident and, you know, swift to be able to cycle now. It has to be for everybody, our public transport, our walking. But we also accept that it's not that the private car will just disappear, clearly not. But we need to, again, manage those implications around traffic. There are communities now that have suffered from rat-running for periods of time. We've rolled out low-traffic neighbourhoods in Kellam, which is one of those communities. We're consulting at the moment in Crooks, in Nether Edge, and I'm sure that that, again, is part of that rollout of further work across the city to make sure that those communities in Sheffield are, you know, in line with that wider ambition of what the city wants to achieve.
Sorry, if I can, one final one, and going back to the masks thing again, Tom. Yesterday, we had an all-member seminar with, what's his name? Thank you, Greg Fell, and he said that mask-wearing is still really important. And he said he was concerned that people think that the pandemic is over. And although it isn't at the heights that it clearly was at the beginning, it's still always of concern. And although buses have signs on them saying you really must wear a mask, clearly, bus drivers are unable to enforce that, really difficult thing to do with passengers. What can we be doing, what can the transport executive or whoever the mayor's office be doing to make mask-wearing much more, I'd say much more compulsory, but making it compulsory indeed, as it ought to be, on public transport?
Can I just say it's three o'clock, so can we be really, really succinct?
Yep. So in terms of making it compulsory, I don't think that they can, but they are promoting it. Some of those messages need to come at a national level, and that position is my opinion. The, you know, the PTE within their interchanges they manage are promoting use of masks. Operators, as you say, you know, are trying to encourage, but they cannot make. It's similar to other places, you know, you'll experience that in supermarkets and other places where there's the advice, but people are taking the kind of, the choice that they're able to make. I can't really comment more than that really, unfortunately.
I think we ought to follow Wales as example.
Formally. I'm sorry, members, we're going to have to wrap it up now. I did have two members asking, but I'm going to, sorry, councillor Jones and councillor Levery, but you did have chairs before. So can we accept the report and the recommendations on the report, councillors? Yeah, we are in agreement? Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, Chair, I'm not entirely in agreement, but I'm not clear what we can do. The decision's been made, it's not a call-in. I'm prepared to note the report, but I don't want to accept it because I don't think we should be including the inner ring road in the scheme. And I would like that to be kept under consideration by the powers that be. So I'm happy to note the report, I think, at this point, would that be acceptable?
Absolutely. Do you want to make a recommendation and we vote on it, or do you just want it noted?
Recommendation, I recommend we note the report.
Fine, and we've got that agreement anyway, thank you. We, well, we can say thank you to the officers and let them go now, and we'll move on to the work, draft work plan. Thank you very much for attending and giving us the detailed answers that you have. Thank you very much. I think we're all wiser now. Right, item eight, yes, best re-informed. Number eight, the draft report, the work, draft work programme, over to Deborah.
Thank you, Chair. I'll make this as quick as possible. There's just a couple of points that I just want you to flag up with members with regard to the report. First of all, I want to offer my apologies for not notifying members prior to the meeting. Paper's been published that the agenda item for today's meeting had changed. You were expecting the equalities report. There's been a delay to the production of that report, so I'm not altogether sure whether it's going to be even ready for the December's meeting or whether it might push into the new year. So the next issue that I wanted to raise with you is the fact that if it isn't ready for the December meeting, we don't have any scheduled items for December, so if anybody's got any bright ideas of urgent issues or issues of interest that you want to put on the agenda for December, I'd be interested to hear.
Councillor Jones?
Maybe not for December, but there was an outstanding question that I did want to bring forward, which was, if the compliance for the clean air zone had moved from 25 to 24, and that the zone will be compliant by the time the cameras are switched in in 22, I think that there is a element, whether it's this committee or elsewhere, for us to look, whether it's a wise way of spending public money on putting up cameras that won't be needed, just simply because client earth might look to sue Sheffield if we didn't do that. Shouldn't client earth be looking to sue government for not pursuing policies better? I know that's kind of outside the remit of some of the stuff we'd want to do, but I'd like to see an overview of the progress of the clean air zones and whether the implementation as is, is still warranted as we move into 22, because I think that's something we need to look at. And it may be a case that we need to write back to government and say, why are you wasting so much money when you could have been spending that money on other measures, rather than putting in cameras? The train station, for instance, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Levery.
Thank you, Chair. I'm aware that a report on Sheffield City Trust and the plans beyond that period comes to Cooperative Executive in November, and I think that should come to overview and scrutiny as well.
Sorry, transport, did you say transport?
Sheffield City Trust.
Trust, oh right, sorry, I misheard you.
Thank you.
Is that one for our committee still? Because I know it was on the economic one.
It would come to this committee on the basis that it doesn't fit under the other two. So this committee has become a bit of a roundup committee for all of the, for any other issues really. So yeah, it would legitimately come to this committee, so I can look into that. The other two things that I just wanted to point out to members or bring to your attention is that the March item is now going to be the statutory performance review of the community strategy, community safety strategy, sorry, from the Community Safety Partnership. And I've invited officers, council officers, and also the police to attend that meeting. And the February meeting is going to be brought forward by one week. So it's Thursday the 10th instead of the 17th, and that's to allow the committee to consider the budget before it goes to Co-op Exec.
Thank you. Does it, councillor Jones?
There is also the small thing of the peer review of the council and how that's proceeding, that we need to get on there at some stage, I suspect.
Yeah, absolutely, and also the repairs, we did ask for that to come at some point. So if we could leave you with those suggestions and see where officers are with the reports and then get back.
Could I just very briefly raise the issue of repairs and maintenance? Because the neighbourhoods and communities, sorry, communities and neighbourhoods get the wrong way around. Transitional committee are really interested in the repairs and maintenance, but they're interested in the context of wider kind of housing-related services. So I've been speaking to Nathan Rogers, and he believes that what was agreed, I wasn't here at that, the meeting that you last discussed it unfortunately, but his interpretation is that there was a request for a member working group on it. So it's possible that that working group could report both here and to the transitional committee. But yeah, I am on with it, is what I wanted to say.
If you could look into that, I don't want to cause officers double work if it's going to one committee. I wouldn't want to drag it here as well, that's unfair on officer time. But if you could look into where we are with it all, and as long as we've got an agenda for the next month, I think we'll all be happy. Councillor Otten?
Sorry, Chair, yeah, I'm on that transitional committee myself, and there was some discussion of a members' working group. I didn't recall it being definitively decided there would be one. So I'm not, you know, before we pile on the places for it to report to, I think we should wait for it to be established.
Right, I think it was the last meeting of the OSMC, when they discussed repairs and maintenance, they asked for a worker, a members' working group.
Right, we asked, well, okay.
Okay, right, we've got some ideas anyway, thank you very much. We'd better get going, haven't we? Next meeting is the 2nd of December at one o'clock. Thank you very much, members.